All right, we're go Phil.
Okay, I'll call a meeting to order at, we're at 6:36 for the December 21th GFW School Board Meeting. First, we'll approve the agenda. There is one correction that I was given so far. It is under six I, I two, number one, under the resignations, the month should be December instead of November. Is there any other corrections or additions to our agenda? Hearing none? Is there a motion?
We approve the agenda.
Motion made to approve the agendas. There a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda with that one correction signify by saying I.
I.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Well, next move on to number three here, the school and community recognition, spirit of the season. I'll turn over Mr. Horton.
All right, today we have a very exciting, a very exciting school and community recognition. We're gonna do this one a little different. Often we do these by me giving a speech and presenting a certificate. We're still going to present a certificate today, but we have something very special today. Ms. Awesome has been a leader in our community, working with spirit of the season. And we actually have behind us some of the great things that she's helped to organize and people have donated. And we really want to take some time to show you just the amazing work that she and her program have been doing. So the first thing I'd like to do is have her come up and receive a certificate and get a picture with the board. And then she's gonna give us a tour and explain all the different things that are happening with spirit of the season and show us the great work that they're doing. So come on up, let's uh, let's see if you go right in front of the computer here so everybody can see ya. Go ahead. Right up here so everybody can see ya. Right up here. Yep, we want everyone to face the camera so everybody can see you. And I'll take a picture. All right, ready? On three, one, two, and three. Beautiful, I love it. I'm gonna jump into you then. Random guy that showed up at the meeting. All right, thank you. So I'm gonna have you take me on a tour. I'm gonna bring my camera with, and you're gonna give us a tour. Are you gonna come with too? All right. Okay. And joining us is going to be Ms. Elmer, who is also a huge supporter of the program and involved. And so I'm gonna turn towards you, and you can give us a tour. I'm gonna disconnect my Bluetooth so people can hear you.
Okay, so we have to speak, we have to kind of stay close to the computer, so.
Okay. Okay, so basically what we do is we collect families from the district who are, most of them are, are working and have jobs that are minimum wage jobs and having trouble making ends meet. So community ed helps by providing quilts. We have a lot of families who don't have the basic necessities, blankets, pillows, towels, sheets, washcloths, bathroom supplies. So what we do is we collect this stuff and store it. And then we have a Christmas pass out. So what we do is we, Julie helps with the Christmas dinner. Each family gets a complete Christmas dinner. And then we collect food throughout the year and we keep some of these families supplied with food throughout the school year. And we take the food that we have and then we divide it up amongst the families. So we've got quilts and pillows and some school supplies. Pots and pans, somebody donated, shampoos, toothbrushes, toothpaste, mittens, hats, scarves.
Few toys.
Few toys. Each family receives a complete box of food, their soap, toothbrushes, toothpaste, just basic necessities, towels. We have families who don't have towels, so we collect towels. The day after Christmas, Kohl's has a great sale and I buy towels. Blankets, I make these blankets, sheets. You know, each year we find out from families things they don't have. And so then the next year we add those things to what we have in order to give them or provide that they can take, because all this stuff on these tables are just allowed to, to take what they need. Then we have more quilts. And then we have, sometimes we have some clothing, where we just put out, you know, extra clothing. This year we have a box of boots. And then basically what we do with each family is they give us a list of needs first, and then I want wants, because all children deserve toys at Christmas. So then what I do is we shop for the needs first, and then we also buy the wants. And then everything gets wrapped, and it's usually all wrapped individually, so they have plenty to open. So each family has garbage bags full of gifts. So the gifts on the stage right now are just organized as normal due to COVID, but.
And everything is anonymous, so people don't know who they're buying for. It goes by a number.
Yep, I let her the families.
Letter system.
Letter A, letter B, and it'll say boy, age four. And so then these are all the garbage bags that will be pulled out tomorrow and added to the boxes. You've got everything from diapers to wipes to, there's clothes in here, there's pajamas, socks, underwear, just basic things. We've got jackets, snow pants, boots. And then we've had some other, you know, some people adopt a family, so some boxes I don't quite know what's in all of them, so. And then they just come in and they pick up their, they have a point in time now and they'll pick up their, their bags of gifts, their dinner, and then they can shop through the tables of the stuff that we have. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
It's absolutely amazing what you do. Can you share a little bit more about the holiday meals that you put together?
Um, well, we used to do a hammer turkey dinner. And then we found a lot of people couldn't, didn't know how to cook the turkeys, so we went to basically a ham. So tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM, I have 26 hams to pick up. And potatoes are put in.
Yeah, it's a full holiday dinner. And then the rest of the food that is in the boxes is donated food. It's just a variety from cereals to mac and cheese to.
Peanut butter tuna.
Butter tuna.
Coffee, whatever has been donated is kind of, we just divide everything out equally. And they'll each get a dozen Christmas cutout cookies tomorrow too. I pick those up tomorrow morning too, once they get traded, so. Just a little of everything and it's a drop in the bucket. It's one day. You know, it's one day out of the whole year that they're gonna have them again, so.
Well, I think it's absolutely amazing what you do, and you really embody the spirit of what, what this award is about. And thank you, and thank you, Ms. Elmer, for everything that you're doing. It's absolutely amazing. And our families are so lucky to have wonderful people like you in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, I am going to be walking back towards the frontier with the camera, so Chair Clank, feel free to take back over and.
Okay, next item on our agenda is visitor recognition and public comments. Looks like we have the press here, couple staff that'll be speaking a little bit later. Julie, was there anybody that wanted to speak tonight? Okay. We'll move on to number five, our informational items. Yep. Number five, the informational items. We'll start with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Clank. Appreciate it. Is my mic working again? Am I connected back up? Oh, searching for it.
We'll just turn it off for my presentation. I think going back and forth. It was? Okay. Can you hear me okay now through the speakers? Okay, I'll just use the computer. Thank you, everyone. Okay, superintendent report. So we had, at 6 o'clock tonight, we had our annual meeting, which was a summary of our world's best workforce and achievement integration plan. There was not a lot of updates this year in terms of data because of the testing that did not take place last spring. The five areas of world's best workforce, we look at kindergarten readiness. And our goal is 75% students being ready. And we also have a read well by third grade, which is 75% of our grade through students being proficient or exceeding expectations on the MCA reading test. We did not have those tests and assessments last year, so we don't have that data. Same thing on for a high achievement for all students and a closing achievement gaps. We do not have any MCA data for last year, so there's no report there. We did not have the ACT testing as well, so there's no data there. We did have graduation and our goal is to get to 95% of students graduating within four years. We're currently at 89.6%, so that was our most recent data. In addition to that, some things that we've been working on is the implementation of continuous improvement teams. These are building, building level instructional teams that are going through a comprehensive needs assessment. We will be having a training this week on that, on how to identify our, our root causes on what students need, and we'll be building that into our future budgets and strategic planning. So more information to come on that, but we've been doing training throughout the year, and we'll have another training this week on Wednesday. That, yeah, that is the big piece of my superintendent report. We continue to evaluate data on COVID-19. Numbers are dropping significantly in the surrounding counties, so that's a good sign. We've kind of made it over a hump. I do know that, that there are a lot of people that have been looking at traveling. I think I heard on the news a million people are planning to be flying from around the country. I would just like to encourage families that in order for us to, in order for us to keep kids in school, we need to continue to be safe and do that throughout the holidays, so please, please follow the recommendations made. We have set guidance that we have to follow. And so to help us keep kids in school, please try to make safe decisions over the break. We do have some new guidance that has been passed out by the governor and the Department of Education. We're working through that guidance right now to see how that affects GFW. I've been attending some different trainings already today and last week. I hope to have more information on that and determine how that'll impact GFW once we come back from break. So that is the end of my superintendent report. Oh, wait, excuse me. That's my other piece. I do have another piece. We have policies under there. I apologize. Let me do that as well. I do have five policies on here. Policy one, two, three, and five are all very similar in nature. They were before we switched over to the MSB model policies. They're really job descriptions is why, what they are, and those generally do not live at the policy level. Those generally live at the administrative level, so I'm bringing those forward just recommendation. It's nothing to do with the position, other than we're just taking the job description out of policy. If we wanted to make a, if we wanted to add a position or do anything like that and make changes to a job policy, it would take us three months in order to do that, in order to even make an adjustment to a job description. And that's why we wouldn't want to do that, because we have to go through the two readings. We'd want to be able to move more quickly and get those positions posted and whatnot. So just looking to take those out of the policy level and put those in the administrative level. So that is, that is pretty much it for the summaries. Are there questions about the policies or any concerns with that?
Doesn't appear to be. That makes sense, though, to not have it in that position, or that place in our, in our school district. Okay, we'll go on to, we have our, our principal reports are in the packet, Dasher reports in the packet. Anybody have any meetings that, that they attended here this last month? I know with COVID, a lot of meetings have been canceled or. So, hearing none? I will keep on rolling here then. We'll go on to F, the business services, truth and taxation. Do we need to wait till 7 o'clock exactly on that, or with Lindsay coming in? Mr. Horton, do we need to wait?
You know, I can start us in the process and she can join in, so I can get us going. That's okay.
All right, we'll move on to that, then. You have the floor.
Hey, I need to bring up our presentation, so bear with me one second here. The most current one. Screen. Okay, everybody hear me okay? Sounds okay? All right, wonderful. Business Manager Heine will be joining me in a little bit to go through our, our truth and taxation information tonight. I'm gonna get us started, and if there's a piece that would address, would be addressed better by her, I'll let you know and just say when she'll be here. She'll be here, I believe, about seven. She actually is working on another truth and taxation presentation for another district, so. Her and I were working earlier today on this one, and we were hoping it would time up well, so I think she'll be here very shortly. So, Mr. Hoheisel out of Barrett also helped us with the presentation today, so in order to help gather some information and make sure that we had everything correct. At tonight's meeting, we're gonna talk about a few things. One, we're talking, talk about the 2020 pay, 2021 proposed property tax levy. This includes, includes proposed changes and the significant purposes for those changes. Includes current year, the current year budget fiscal year 20. It includes the distribution of revenues and revenue sources, spending area programs, as well as it will be a public comment and question period at the end of the presentation for those who would like to do so. So, the first slide, what it really tells us is that counties work on a calendar year cycle in terms of their levies. So they go January 1 to December 31st. School districts operate differently. We run from a July 1 to a June 30. To make things even more fun, the federal government runs from October on forward, so that there's lots of different things happening. And a huge half heads off to business managers everywhere, including our own Business Manager Heine. It takes a long time to plan a budget, and it takes a long time to close out a budget. So at this time of the year, our business managers across the state are working in three different fiscal years. They're closing out the audit, they're working in the current year, and they're getting ready for the future year. That can be very, very time consuming and very challenging, and she does a great job with that. The first section here is gonna talk about levies. So, within the levy, we have the general fund levy, and this is based largely on student enrollment. We have the community education fund levy. And this includes things like basic community education revenue, youth services, and after-school revenue. And then we have early childhood, family education, which is based on the number of children under the age of five in our district. We also have the debt service fund levy. This is also referred to as Fund VII. The debt service fund may be composed of voter-approved bonds as well as non-voter-approved bonds such as payment bonds, alternative facility bonds, capital equipment notes, capital facilities bonds, and long-term facility maintenance bonds. An example of this would be the 2015 A refunding bond that the school district currently has. And this fund collects principal and interest to make payment on those, to make payment on those. What you'll note in here is that this is not set by us, but this is set at the state level, that it's the principal and interest plus 5%. Now, you might say, well, why am I getting more than the 5%? This actually gets kicked back to taxpayers in the next year, usually through debt excess. So you'll notice later in the presentation where in the first year, they, they will give you the principal interest in the 5%. And then you'll see that come off the following year usually. And that's what notes down here below, is that anytime that there is a 5% overage, if anything beyond that 5%, it then gets given back to everybody. And this is not done by us. This is done at the state level. And this is an adjustment the Department of Education makes. The reason this is, is because you never want to have too little money in there, so you couldn't pay your bills. So this is something they do across the state. We also have the other post-employment benefits or OPEB. This was something we talked about recently in our school meeting, a couple, it goes to, two school board meetings ago. And we refinanced those and passed savings back onto our taxpayers at the amount of, I believe it was around $27,000 or something like that. Might have been even a little bit more than that when it all settled and done. That's what this is, and this is largely around retirement schedules. So after, after people leave the school district, they may still be on school district insurance, for example. This is what would cover that cost. Again, just like the other one, it's at a 5%, up to 5% above the principal and interest. And anytime you go beyond that, we would see, we'd see the debt excess come back in the next year. Unlike the debt service fund levy, this OPEB debt service fund levy does not qualify for the A to school to offset credit program. So in the debt service fund levy, you could see that A to school credit realized. You would not see that here on OPEB. On the next slides, I want to be very clear that this is not our total budget, okay? We're talking about the levy right now. So you're gonna see general fund 80%, providing funding to regular school, to, to the regular and special education instructional programs, support services, transportation, instructional athletic, aspirational equipment, technology, building, maintenance, et cetera. Of the levy dollars, that makes up 80% of the levy. However, this is not our, this, again, this is not our overall school district budget. This is just the levy portion. The community education fund makes up around 3.73%. Again, this is the community education programs, early childhood programs. Our debt service fund makes up 12.28%. And this is levy for repayment on the principal and interest of the district's debts. Then there's the OPEB, which makes up 3.74%. And again, that has to do with things like the insurance costs, so after teachers are no longer in the district. The school district levy is changing by roughly $897,917.13, or 52.93%. And this comes from our MDE levy limitation certification report. Now, this is where Business Manager Heine was going to take over and discuss some of those different pieces. We have about 30 seconds to see if she'll be here, so if she's not, I can definitely move forward. It sounds like she is having technical difficulties at her other meeting. So they are on slide 10 of 29 in her current meeting, which means she will not be here. So I'm gonna go through her portion of the presentation. And if we have some questions, then maybe we can circle back when she does get here at some point, if the board's okay with that. Okay. All right, so this, the next slides are for the current school year, 2020, 2021. Okay, so that's right now. And this was based off the adopted budget that took place back June 30 or just prior to that, that the board approved. This does not include all the different adjustments that we've made moving forward. For example, in July, we had the administrative restructure that we talked about, July, August, September. This is not included in, in these numbers. These are the different funds that you'll see. You'll see we have the general fund, we'll have food service, community education, the debt fund, custodial fund, OPEB trust, OPEB debt service fund. And within there is a, is a breakdown of the different funding. In the far right corner, you'll see a $10.5 million budget, and that is the sum of everything put together. To go back and talk about the levy portion, at the very top here, you'll see general fund, Fund I, local property tax levies at $1,466,700. These are the levy dollars that we were just talking about in the previous conversation, so that makes up a portion of our budget, but not all of it. You'll see there are other funds that come in here, and largely in school districts, most funding comes from the state of Minnesota. You'll see that seven, roughly 7.5 million comes from the state of Minnesota. The federal government actually only contributes about $341,000 to our, to that. So most of the funding comes from first the state level, and then it comes from local taxes, local property taxes, and then you'll see some dollars from the federal level. And you can see that for each of the different categories here. This is a revenue by source, so this is a nice visual pie chart of kind of where the different money's coming from. And what you can see on here. It hasn't been, okay. Mr. Warner, if you could come up and help the guests here, that would be great, just so they can make sure they see the presentation.
Be right there.
Thank you. For GFW school district, 73.38% comes from the state. So again, we have a large, the largest portion of the pie comes from state revenue. We have some funds that are coming from the federal level. We have some from local property taxes. And local property taxes make up the second part of our, second largest part of our budget. This is a breakdown by revenue by fund. As you can see, most funds go into the general fund that makes up for 88% of it. We also have some funds from food service, community education, our debt fund, and then others account for about 1% over there. If you take a look at our expenditures, our expenditures here, most funds come out of the general fund. You will see that we were deficit spending, so if you note back here in, in 2021 here, the general fund was at 9.3, $9.3 million. And we were just over 9.5 in our expenditures, our proposed expenditures. This is why through the operating levy process, we said there was further adjustments we wanted to make to our budget. One example, that was again, the administrative restructure and why we wanted to save the school district funding, which amounted to about $100,000 to do that. So for the general fund, these are the expenditures by object code. Wages and salaries make up $4.9 million of the school district's funds. Employee benefits make up about 1.7, purchase services about 2 million, supplies and materials, 478,000, capital expenditures 323, and debt services about 13,000. So total expenditures, again, equal about $9.5 million. Again, general fund expenditures by object code, you can see that the majority of our budget goes towards wages and salaries. And you'll find that consistent in all school districts. General fund expenditures by program. So if we take a look at those and break it down a little further, these are, these are the different expenditures. At the administration costs, we see there's roughly 608,000. This would include superintendent principals, this would include secretaries and positions like that. District support services would be business support services. General education, this is largely our certified staff. And you'll see that and you'll see that that's actually one of the larger parts of our budget, which is normal for a school district. We also have vocational ed. Okay, is that better? Wonderful, okay. So you'll see that regular education makes up a larger budget, and that's very consistent with school districts. Vocational education, this includes things like AGCS, VACs, and CTE. Special education is for services for students receiving special education services. Instructional support would be media, staff development, technology. People support services would be things like guidance counselors, transportation, and nurses. Sites and buildings would be things like custodial, LTFM, and repairs. Again, you see that totals out to about 9.5. Again, you see that totals out to about $9.5 million. Again, here's the general fund, general fund expenditures by program, kind of breaks off by percentage. And then there is just some local fiscal, financial reminders we wanted to give people as to why things, why the, what the levy was about and different pieces. On August 11th, 2020, we had an election, and the school district asked a question to the community to increase the operating levy authority to 1,406.30. This replaced the existing authority of $302.30. So what that means is we had an operating levy imprisoned, so we removed that and eliminated it, and then we replaced it with a new 10-year operating levy. As I had mentioned in the early beginning of the presentation, the school district will not realize those funds until the next fiscal year, because we follow a different calendar than the county calendar year. So July, we do not see any new funding until July 1 of next spring, about six months from now. This will generate approximately $770,000 in revenue for the school district. And when the question was asked, we had roughly over 1,400 votes that approved this, and roughly 63% of voters approved this. I wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about enrollment tonight and, and what that means. So we put together a slide here, and the very thing, first thing I want to do is make it very clear as people start looking at slide numbers, is that if you take a look at this, it is not looking left to right. You have to look over and down a column, okay? Because you're moving forward a year, you're progressing forward. So you don't look across from left to right. That's not how you're reading this. So again, to be very clear, we're going to take a look at, if I'm looking at 2018, 19, and I'm going to go down to the second line and I see 52.29, I'm going to go across and down one. So I'm looking from 52.29 to 53.43, okay? So just to give a sense of how we're looking at this graph for people. It's important to understand how to look at enrollment data. It is a, is a gross oversimplification to ask, what is our enrollment today? And then try to draw a conclusion on how that impacts our school district. That is not how you look at enrollment data. Schools are data-rich environments, and there's lots of data in the world. It's important to understand not only what data you need to look at, but how to analyze that data, which is really important. And what we should be looking at is the interplay of data, and we should be looking at this at multiple levels, dissecting it, looking at it long-term for trends. And I'm going to share a little bit about with, a little bit about that with you tonight. It takes, right now, the enrollment numbers for last year are just getting finalized at the state level. So to, to say that again, all the numbers that were shared last year and whatnot, it doesn't really count until we get till about now. Six months after the end of the school year is when they actually go back and finalize what those numbers are. Now, if we lose 200 students in a single day, is that a big deal? Well, yes, yes, it is, right? We would be very concerned about what happened there. But the ebbs and flows change over time, and it's important to understand how to look at that data. For example, we talked during the levy process about a capture rate. When we take a look at the capture rate, the number of students that we have in our area, and the percentage that we retain versus other districts across the state, we are a very average district. I heard through the levy process, some people told me all the students were leaving. Our capture rate says differently. If we want to take a look at our enrollment numbers, let's go back and look at what the solid numbers are that we're using for funding, because when people talk about enrollment, they're talking about funding, right? They want to know, are we, are students, students in school equals funding for the school district, right? So let's take a look at some of that for a second. If we go to 2018, 2019, 52.29 students, okay? That was the average daily membership. Again, this number gets calculated almost six months after the end of a school year. 52.29. If we go forward a little bit, and we go to the next grade, so that was, that was first grade. First graders, we had 52.29. If I follow them down to second grade, 53.43. Okay, so we saw an increase of about one, maybe a little bit more. All right, well, that's, that's one. It's a very small number. That could be, that could be a single family moving. That could be half of a family moving. That, that's a very small number. If we go down to the second grade class that year, and we go over and down again, follow them in the third grade, it goes from 43.24 to 42.58, okay? So we saw a little bit of decrease. It's kind of balancing out. We go down to third grade, 54, down to 53. Now, important to remember is that in grades one through six, the funding formula is 1.0. So you take, you take a multiplier of 1.0 and multiply times the dollar amount, and that's what you get per student. If I jump down to seventh grade, and I go over here to 58.36, and I follow them to the next year, we go up to 60.27. We actually get a multiplier of 1.2 on our secondary students. So depending where your enrollment is, could have an impact on whether or not you see increases or decreases in funding. So in terms of a pure funding standpoint, gaining a student in the elementary versus gaining a student in secondary has different implications. And we can look down and see this, and if you look overall, you know, enrollment 713, 709, it's, and then you adjust it down below, we're, we're not that different. We're, are there some changes? Yes. Now, we have a small sample size. We're not dealing with 10,000 students or 12,000 students. We're dealing with smaller. So you, you might see those ebbs and you might get a little bit more concerned about a single number from a percentage standpoint, but you know, families are going to move. We have school choice. Some families are going to move in somewhere and go out. Mom, dad, significant other gets a new job, and they're going to take the kids with them. And you know, I think I used the example during the levy, there was some student going to school in Oseo. I don't know who's commuting Oseo, what's going on there, but that's, I don't know, was that three hours from here or something like that? Two and a half hours? This happens for unknown reasons, and it's part of being a school district, and all of them do it. So you go back to the capture rate, and you take a look at that capture rate, and our capture rate is very similar to that of other districts and states. So it's important to look at trends. How are things doing over time? We need to take a look at where we're losing the enrollment. We need to take a look at the formulas and how the, this, that gets impacted. I'll share more on that in a little bit. We need to look at that grade level. We can't just oversimplify enrollment by looking at a single number on a single day and try to draw conclusions from that. Is that data point significant? It might have some value, but not in isolation. You have to look at that as a broader picture. I talked about comprehensive needs assessments. I used to be a special education teacher, and so let me share a little bit about that. When we do an evaluation for special education services, we don't take what the student looked like on a single day and say, this is what you are. We do a comprehensive assessment. We do interviews. We do standardized, we do all these different pieces, surveys, interviews, to come up, and then we look at all that data, and then we try to figure out what we can do to service a student. The comprehensive needs assessment for schools does the same thing. We take a look at all these different data and variables, and we try to nail it down. We can't oversimplify enrollment data to just look at that in a single point. We want, need to look at a lot of different information to draw accurate conclusions. So I say that just to urge people with caution, and if you want to learn more about enrollment, I'd love to sit down and talk with you about it, and we can actually go through the data, but plan on spending some time doing it, because it's not a 30-second conversation. So how are state aid and local levies determined? Authority for school levies, a school district tax levy may be either set by the state formula, or it could be voter-approved. So there's two ways that this happens. So remember, I mentioned enrollment earlier. When our enrollment goes down, our levy funding sometimes goes up. So somebody would say, well, you lost students, so you lost funding. Well, I might have lost some of that funding, but based on the levy, I might have actually increased some of my funding. It depends. It's a lot of different pieces coming together. So again, important to understand the data and how you're utilizing and understanding on the background what that actually takes. It takes the state of Minnesota six months past end of the school year to figure that out. So we need to make sure that we go through the process, we're using the right data, and we're looking back at what data is important in order for us to make good decisions. I want to talk through some of the different general fund gross levy comparisons. First of all, we have the referendum. The referendum is voter-approved. This is what the voters approved. There's also a local optional. State statute allows school, gives school board authority to do the local optional. There's equity. Equity is a disparity between the largest, the districts that have the highest amount of revenue and the lowest amount of revenue, and there's a formula that offsets that. So if you have a lower amount of revenue, you get some extra funding here, and you can see that we do get some. Transition. This is a hold harmless. So it's a hold harmless provision, and there's a formula in there, and you can see we get some funding there as well. Operating capital is based on a per pupil. Alternative teacher comp, this is, this is, we receive this funding both through levy and through aid. Achievement integration, we are an achievement and integration district. You can see we have funding there. Reemployment insurance, the school district does not have unemployment insurance. There is not unemployment insurance for schools, so that is part of the levy. Safe schools, we get $35 per pupil in that area. Career and technical education, we get 35% reimbursement on approved courses and licensures in CTE. LTFM, long-term facilities and maintenance. It's the age of the building plus pupils, as well as health and safety projects that qualify for those funds. There's building and lease aid. So this is based, or there's, you could levy for a building and land lease. Riverbend is an example of this. This is how we get the, the riverbend pieces. And then there's tax abatement. So let's say a taxpayer just chose not to pay their taxes for a certain amount of period of time. This would be a way that you recoup those costs. And you can see here, if you look at the total dollar difference between the 2019 paid 2020 and the proposed 2020, 21, that in some areas you'll see an increase, in other areas you'll see a decrease. For the referendum, you're going to see a positive there, because we just passed an operating levy, so that would make sense, right? There's a large add there. Local optional, you see that. You have the equity where we lost money. You see Q comp where we lost, there's a loss there, and building and land lease. So there's negative adjustments in there too. So based on all these complex formulas of enrollment and adjustment rates set by the legislature, and this factor and this factor, you can see it can go up and down for category depending what happens. For the community service one, this is based on the number of adult, residents, adults in the resident district and the number of children under five. This is the OPEB debt service, and remember I talked about that debt excess, that 5% at the beginning of the presentation? So this is that money getting, this is that money being taken off. So they have the principal and interest at 102,781.88 for proposed 2020, 21. But that's over the 5% that the state allows, so MDE does an automatic adjustment and lowers that amount. So they lower the levy amount for taxpayers automatically, because it goes beyond that 5%. This slide largely shows that we had an operating levy. This is 2017, 18, 19, 20, and 21. You can see there's very little difference in some of these different debt services and community education. We were pretty steady here on the levy. It was this increase right here in the red. That's our operating levy. Other than that, our funding has been pretty, pretty steady. So what are the main reasons that your property taxes might increase or decrease? One of the big things is market value. It could happen with changes in class rates in your history. Market value exclusion, voter-approved referendums, state adjustments such as the AIG to school tax credit program, and new programs authorized or mandated by the legislature. The market values are final and are not subject to upcoming budget hearings. They were discussed at local county board of review and county board of equalization hearings held earlier this year. The final, the final taxable market values may reflect a reduction under the limited value law. If this property is a qualifying homestead, the final taxable market values may exclude improvements which you made to this property. This is an example of GFW's tax base history. And so I'll explain a little bit more what this means here. The referendum market value or the RMV, this is your households, this is your commercial properties. It excludes seasonal and recreational properties, and excludes ag land beyond the, the house property and the one acre of land. If we go back to about 2017 here, we can see that, okay, we've seen a lot, we've seen increases over the last four years in property values. Property values have gone up 6% for 77. Then we have the net tax capacity, which is class rates applied to the market value. And we're going to see that if we look over to the right, we're going to see some negative numbers. This is often the price of ag land. And so how, this is how ag land is doing. And that's what this, this story is telling us here. It's telling us how we're doing, how, how the ag land is doing and how the, the houses and commercial properties are doing. Now, there are four levies that are funded out of the referendum market value. They are operating levy, the local optional, the transition and equity parts of the levy. All others, the other nine I talked about, those all come under net tax capacity. So depending which one you, which one adjusts, it's going to impact your taxes. Base, it might impact your taxes differently depending where you fall. If you have a lot of ag land, or if you have a house or commercial property. So that can shift those dollars around a lot based on those state formulas. And which one went up, I'm going to go back again, and remember we saw that some of them went up and some of them went down. So your taxes might have changed, because it may have gone up in one area or down like here in another. So equity went down, and equity is under the, the house is a commercial. So if you have a house or commercial property, that portion, you know, it's the sum of all this together, but that portion at least shows a decrease. If you had ag land, lots of ag land, that might not have impacted you. Same thing for the Q comp here. We saw a decrease in the Q comp here. This affects the ag land more than affects the other, the RMV. So those are some reasons why those numbers could have changed. The state legislature changed the market value homestead credit to homestead market value exclusion. The 2011 legislature repealed the homestead market value credit, or the homestead credit, and replaced it with the new homestead market value exclusion. The exclusion began for property taxes payable in 2012 and continues for taxes payable in 2021. This next chart is an example, and we used 100,000, 125,000, 150,000 in our levy process, and so we chose to use that number again. This is a way to look at an example of what could happen. If you have a property value at $150,000 and the estimated market value is 150,000, there's no change from year to year. This assumes that there's no increase in your property value. The actual paid 2020 school portion of taxes was 320 in 2020. The preliminary pay school portion of taxes in 2021 is about $612.63. During the operating levy process, we talked about a $150,000 house is about a $300 increase or so. This is, shows about that. Now, how could that have changed? Well, what if your property value went up? Not everybody goes up by four, five, six, seven percent. It depends on your property. So assuming a 3% increase, which is what this does up here, you see the three in yellow, $150,000 property back in 2020 might be $154,836 in 2021. So instead of that 320.32, you're, and then you're going to go up to 633.19 the following year. That's a, that's $312 versus the 292 if you didn't have a property value increase. So that's just an example of how that can happen and why those taxes may have changed or not changed for you. Chuck Link, this is the resolution that for you later on when we get to the approval section. So I'm not going to read through that, but I have a copy here for you, and where it is in the PowerPoint as well. So at this point, this is an opportunity for public comment and questions. So if there's anybody here that wishes to provide a public comment or ask a question, I welcome them. You can come up and use my computer. I'll give you a chair, one that I have not touched, and you're welcome to speak to the board, and so our audience can hear you.
All right. Is there anybody that'd like to make any public comments at this time? Hearing no volunteers, we'll continue on with the presentation.
That is the end of the Truth and Taxation presentation for this year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Horton. We'll move on to our next order of business, which will be G athletics. And I believe we have someone who'd like to speak.
I am going to go stand outside and Mr., Mr. Bussie will be here and he's going to talk about athletics.
Back on November 21st, um, our seasons as we knew them at that point, uh, for some came to a close and for others a pause. So as an example, football and volleyball seasons wrapped up on the 20th of November. Dance would be an example of a season that was underway that, that had to hit the brakes to in-person practices and go to a virtual component as a result of that pause. In the meantime, um, we as a school district have gone to a different learning model, a varied learning model where our nine through 12 graders are distance learning and everyone else is in-person or a hybrid model of some sort. So a number of things are, have gone on in the last month. Recently, um, our governor's guidance has changed or at least a projected change. And one of the dates that sticks there is January 4th. And with that projected change, um, we have the opportunity again on January 4th to return to or to in-person practices or in-person, um, meetings, things of that nature. It's my understanding that as a, as a local decision took place when we decided on our learning model, that we give ourselves the latitude to decide what we allow and what we don't allow and what's permissible and not permissible. And it is only our, it's up to us to determine, um, whether or not we continue to move forward under the guidance of the state of Minnesota. So I, I believe I'm correct in that understanding. I, I believe that, uh, once upon a time, it was completely, uh, what you were allowed to do. Minnesota State High School League wise was completely dictated by the, by the numbers in the state of Minnesota. And the, uh, they are transitioning to that being more of a local decision, completely a local decision. As I understand it and as Mr. Horton has understood it, uh, as I've visited with him as well. So with that, I just want to give you an update as to what that means for January 4th moving forward. If you feel this needs to be more of a, uh, action type item, uh, I guess educate me on that. But I'm going to kind of give you the parameters under which we hope to begin, uh, starting January 4th. I have them outlined there for you. Couple of things that I, um, would like to add that are not there in the time that we've been in this pause. And when I say pause, that was really everything in-person related. So some things continued on, for example, junior high knowledgeable, uh, transition to a, to a virtual format, virtual practices, virtual meets, uh, less than perfect, but they made the best of the situation. Our theater department, um, continued on in a virtual format, preparing a radio play, which you'll be treated to beginning December 24th. Um, and then for about 10 days thereafter, you'll be able to tune into a Christmas Carol radio play. That was directed by Mrs. O'Neil. So, um, those are some things that continued to happen over the course of this pause. Starting January 4th, um, with practices resuming in-person. I would say that life returns to normal, but it's normal under the COVID situation. So, uh, when I say that we're, basketball practice could be back in the gym. Dance practice could be back in the gym. Student council meetings, NHS meetings, eventually they could be back, uh, face to face and in-person. I guess that's what I'm referring to. There are a lot of conditions or, uh, guidance that we must follow when it comes to these practices. Not all of that language is out there for us quite yet. The high school league will give us some guidance on what our practices need to look like. And that's everything from who's wearing masks, how often sanitizing basketballs. You know, how many, how many athletes are allowed in a pod in a gym at a time? All of those things will be addressed in that guidance. Uh, we, we did receive some of this guidance initially, back in early November when they decided on a winter season. Since that time, things have changed considerably. So that guidance will also change. And again, we are awaiting that, uh, direction from the Minnesota State High School League. Along with that guidance, we will receive information regarding what our season will look like. One of the things that has not been decided upon yet is a competition start date. Some of us may have heard January 14th as a potential date. Others might have heard January 18th as a potential start date. And neither of those dates are solid, at least not communicated to the, uh, to the A Ds yet in Minnesota. But, uh, we have, we have been planning with the January 14th date in mind with alternatives if that is not the case. Other guidance that exists around competitions, uh, a maximum of two games per week would be an example. Our dance team will not begin competition until January 30th and they will just, they will run four invitationals throughout January and February. Postseason, um, will look different. How exactly is still to be determined. But it's likely that it will be a condensed version where not everybody participates in the postseason where it might be, um, top four, top eight, top six teams only in a section that participate. Again, that's still to be determined. Uh, I think a lot of it is wait and see how the next month develops and use that information to determine what a postseason might look like. So there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of things still to be sorted out. I, I guess what I would be most comfortable saying is that I believe in-person practices will begin on January 4th. Our coaches are prepared to begin with those practices. Once we receive guidance from the high school league on how to conduct those practices, we are certainly comfortable and ready to go. Other, other activities like pop choir, jazz band, as I mentioned, NHS knowledgeable, those organizations, those clubs too, uh, can transition from what they are doing virtually to in-person. And, um, we, we certainly welcome that opportunity to, to move back to that, that mode of doing things. There are a couple of situations that, um, we will work through. In our current learning model with our high school kids being distance learning, if we are still in that, in a distance learning format for, uh, on June, on January 4th, we will have to, uh, make a few adjustments to our transportation schedule to make sure that those, uh, student athletes that wish to be at school for, uh, the pop choir, jazz band, after-school practices, you name it, uh, that we give them the opportunity to get there. Obviously, if they're in a distance learning, um, format, we'll have to, uh, consider that and make sure that that doesn't become an obstacle as to why they're not participating. But visiting with, uh, Mr. Johnson about that, uh, we, we have a preliminary plan in place and, uh, it's not anything we haven't dealt with in the past or, uh, of, uh, any issue that we, we see with it, we can certainly get that, um, accomplished. One other, um, item to note, uh, that might be of some interest, uh, to you. We do have the Fairfax site available to us and we do plan on using that, uh, this winter for junior high girls and boys' basketballs. They will practice and play their games over there. Uh, and the, the shuttling of those athletes doesn't require any extra, at this time, doesn't require any extra transportation loop. Our normal shuttle times get them over there and we already had a return shuttle that started in Fairfax. So nothing new needs to be built into that. And the use of that place certainly takes a lot of pressure off of the high school gym, makes the times for practicing, um, maybe convenient is the wrong word. Makes them make more sense, honestly. So, uh, let's see. Those are the, the things I can tell you at the moment. I know there, there might be some other questions about what's it going to look like for fans this winter? Are there any other travel procedures that we need to be aware of? I, I can't give you that information until the high school league gives us a little direction. They did last fall, uh, tell us two, two spectators per participant as an example. And that was all dependent upon what a gym was able to hold. So that wasn't always true 100% of the time. But the high school league will likely guide, uh, give us some guidance on that. And then we as a school or as a conference, uh, will build our, our fan policies based around that. That, uh, I guess would be another point of interest, uh, for people in the community. Let's see, those, I guess those are the highlights of the things that come across my mind as I think about a January 4th start. Is there anything else, any questions that this prompts as I, as I go through it? Or anything else I can address for those of you out there listening?
I'll open it to the board. Any questions for Mr. Bussie?
Yes, any questions from the board?
No, very none. Thank you. I'm sure it's been a very challenging year to organize everything and to keep it going with all the different changes you've had.
Well, you, you learn to laugh every day at what you're doing. It, what you do one day, 40% of it is, doesn't matter the next day. But I think we all have that with our jobs. So you, at this point, you've become accustomed to it. So, yeah, very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to number six, consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull out of the consent agenda or additional comments or discussion? I'll just remind you where we did have that correction for the effective date of the resignation to be in December versus November. That was changed earlier. Nobody wants to pull anything out? Okay. Is there a motion from anybody? I'll move, we accept the consent agenda. There's a second. Okay. Motion was made in second to get, to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Approved. We'll move on to number seven, approval of resolutions and action items. Uh, the first one is our spring band and choir trip for 2022. I believe we received an email earlier today. Is there, uh, Mr. Horton, is there, there's nobody to speak here tonight on that, correct?
Ms. Blumhofer is in the Zoom meeting right now and she is ready to talk about the band and choir trip. She, she's been working really hard at this. We know there's a lot of families that really love this trip. And I know she's been working hard with her board to try to figure out what we can do to support families. And so she's here tonight to share an option.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address the board on the trip. Um, what we're looking for is to take a trip next March. Due to COVID, we had to unfortunately cancel our trip for this year. And the board is still trying to find ways on how we can, um, either take a trip this spring with the seniors only or find a way to work through the monies, um, and, and do whatever we can to help the kids. We don't have any solutions to that yet, but we are trying to move forward because we know we have other children that are looking forward to taking a trip as well as this has been a longstanding tradition, um, for the GFW school district. So what, what we are proposing is that we move our band and choir trip to Florida to next March. The dates that are in the proposal that I sent you are tentative dates. They'll be dependent upon, um, Mr. Horton setting the calendar. And I can have conversations with him as well. I know that we've always looked at when the, the basketball tournaments fall as well to try to avoid those if we can. So what we're proposing is to take the trip next March and that would get us back on track. So then we would be taking again the sophomores, juniors and seniors. And then from that point, it would be every three years as it has been in the past. And I'm just looking for board approval to go ahead and, um, start that planning process.
Members of the board, um, I've been working with the calendar committee and received feedback on a draft calendar, which would have a spring break in place for next year around the time of that band trip. Uh, there's just a placeholder week in March right now. And if she were able to identify what that date would be, um, when I come to our January board meeting, I could have that all solved and ready for you to review, um, if you were to approve that tonight.
Any questions from the board?
You're talking March of 2022, correct?
Yes. If I said March of 21, I apologize for that. Yes, 22, 22.
Jason, do you have something? Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve her going ahead and planning it.
I'll second that.
Hey, motion was made and I believe you, you're approving the band trip, band and choir trip of, for 2022. As she's kind of planned in to work around the schedule when it comes out. Is that what I heard right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? There's, uh, Melissa, I believe you've seconded it, correct? So we had the motion seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? This is not a roll call vote, correct? Okay. All those in favor of the band trip, approving the band trip and band and choir trip signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It's been approved.
Thank you.
Our next, yep, thank you. Our next item is B. It's the set the levy amount. This is a resolution you left me to read? It isn't four pages this time, right? All right. Thank you. Okay. Pardon? Yeah. I, I can take my glasses off for this one. Okay. Whereas pursuant to Minnesota statutes of the school board of independent school district number 2365 GFW schools, Minnesota is authorized to make the following proposed tax levies for general purposes. General fund, $2,082,157.41. Community ed services, $96,721.71. Debt services, $318,480.18. OPED debt services, $97,012.83. For a total proposed tax levy of $2,594,372.13. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 2365 GFW schools, Minnesota, that the levy to be levied in 2020, to be collected in 2021 is set at $2,594,372.13. The clerk of the, uh, independent school district 2365 school board is authorized to certify the proposed levy to the county auditors of McLeod, Nicolet, Renville, Sibley counties in Minnesota. I move that we accept this, uh, this levy or this resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? I believe this one's a roll call vote. Is that correct? No, we don't need a roll call for the, this resolution. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It is approved. Okay. We'll move on to action item number C, school board meeting dates for 2021. And I believe they were attached.
Yes. The proposed meeting dates are same as this year, uh, third Monday, with the exception of where there's a holiday. And then, uh, we did add a meeting for January. And then we did add a meeting for January 4th, 2021. And then January, Julie, I'm looking at you. The first January on a Monday and Sunday for the organization for 2022, it's that first one, I don't have the date in front of me, but those.
January 3rd.
Yeah, the third, just for that organizational meeting and separating that out from the regular meeting, because that can be be kind of a lot to do it all at once. So this would just do the organizational meeting, get everything set and have that as the only agenda item. And then, and then the, then we have the regular board meeting on the third. For this upcoming year, though, it falls on MLK, so we moved it up to January 11th. So there's two, two board meetings, the 4th and 11th, back to back. And then it'd be starting after that, I believe. So.
I'd like to bring up a comment and see what the rest of the board thinks about it. You know, currently we're having board meetings in Winthrop, given in Fairfax. With everything being virtual and the amount of equipment that Wade has to move back and forth when we do meetings in Winthrop and Fairfax, would it make more sense this year to simply have all the meetings in Given? Eliminate the Winter meetings, eliminate the Fairfax meetings, have them all here. The technology is here, he doesn't have to. I think it would make it a lot easier for him. I don't think it impacts a whole lot of people because most of them watch it virtually.
Well, we do have three people out there. One is press.
Sorry, I don't know, I'd have to take a look at that if that would be something that could be changed or not changed. I don't know right now. I'd have to do some research on that.
Yeah, I mean, it could be passed either way. And if you find out that there is, it's in the charter by laws that when GFW was formed, that we have to have a meeting in every town. I like that idea. I mean, it's not going to affect me unfortunately, but I like the idea of helping the technology out so that they can, it can be ready to go as our meetings. You know, so it'll make it easier on Wade.
One piece that might be something for the board to consider is that if we, after the pandemic ends, I'm assuming it's going to end at some point here, right? Then the, we'd have to have a conversation about the videoing of it because the rules will change a little bit. That'll, that rule will fall off. So that doesn't mean that we should, with the amount of viewership we've had online, that doesn't mean we shouldn't still try to continue to do that as good practice. So to your point, there would be a need for technology if we want to continue forward with that. So just something to think about how that MSBA's and the law piece might fit in. But also if the board wants to see virtual meetings in addition to actual board meetings, so more people can see that and watch it. Just wanted to share that.
Well, I think it should stay virtual. We should have some kind of, something out there so the public can, it seems like they want to watch it for virtue, virtual versus being here in person. I think that's the way it's been in the 12 years that I've been on the board. Very few people show up, but people are interested and they'd like to ask questions. So I know we tried to have it on our website if people wanted to watch it later and that, but this makes more sense in my mind. Because they'd be able to watch it then later too, or watch it live. How about this, Mike? How about until we know what's happening with the vaccines and everything, go to the end of this school year? Try to move everything to Given to help out with the technology as long as legally we can do it, which I believe we can. But Mr. Horton, you'll check on that. And then you know, we can.
Revisit it next year in December, yes.
Well, I was thinking in the summertime, we'd be able to relook at it after the school, end of the school year. So it'd be like July.
Do we want to get your schedule out there like we typically do so everybody knows ahead of time when the meetings are and where they are? I don't. I'm just trying to make it a little easier for Wade.
Right, yeah, I understand. But you do six months for sure and then look at it in three months or four months from now and see where the trends are going and everything, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
We have not scheduled a, we have not officially put together our special meeting for the 30th of December. So I think one thing we could do is we could add this as an agenda item for the 30th and not vote on it today. And that would give me a chance to go do the research on the charter and stuff. So we can make sure we follow any types of processes that may or may not be involved with that. And then we can put on that agenda. So it'd be a school board meeting to look at the learning model and then also the location. That'd be helpful, okay.
What I'm hearing is we'll table this until the 30th of December. Okay. All right, move on to D then, an action item which is combine the polling places for 2022. And we have an attachment for that. Mr. Horton, do you have any additional comments?
I give my time to Julie.
I'll start over. The Secretary of State dictates that we do this every December, combine our polling places. And as it states here, we combined all our townships into the voting sites that you vote at a general election. In this also, it states that the time for the elections will be set at a later date. So we're not we don't have to schedule that at this time. That's what this is for. For our voters to have an easier time if we had a special election.
Okay, any additional comments, questions? Okay, I move that we combine the polling places for 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any further comments or questions? Discussion? Hearing none, I believe this is a roll call vote, Julie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Clank?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Az? Thank you.
All right, it's approved. Next, our resolution for donations. Which states whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor, donors terms is in the best interest of the GFW schools. Now therefore, be it resolved that the GFW schools does accept the ablohed described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein, be it further resolved that GFW wishes to extend its gratitude or grateful appreciation to those various individuals and organizations. GFW elementary received from HNR Block, Kelly Dalton, $100 for T-Bird Club. GFW schools received from donor Jane and John Levens, $500 for scholarships. And which will go in the 21 scholarship account. GFW school, high school, received from the 3M Foundation, $1,000 for the GFW high school. Thank you all that donated. Is there a motion to accept our donations?
I move we accept the donations.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to accept this resolution with the donations. All those in, this is a roll call vote?
Az? Keen?
Yes.
Clank?
Yes.
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved. All right, I have that as our, all of our agenda items for tonight. Is there any further discussion on anything anybody wants to bring up? I move that we adjourn the meeting then.
Is there a second?
A motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for watching tonight.